Good evening. Called to order this August 1st meeting of the Winston-Salem City Council and ask the city secretary to call the roll, please.
Councilmember Light.
Here.
Councilmember Clark.
Here.
Councilmember Bessie.
Here.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Councilmember Burke.
Here.
Councilmember Adams.
Here.
Councilmember McIntosh.
Here.
Councilmember Taylor.
Present.
Thank you very much. Would you please join the city council and me in a moment of silence? Thank you very much. And would you join the city council and me in the pledge of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Our sergeant-at-arms tonight is Lieutenant Rick Noonan. Lieutenant, thank you for being with us tonight. And we have the first item.
Presentation of the 2015 Community Appearance Commission Annual Report.
I think we have the chairman of the Community Appearance Commission, Wendy Hartup, with us tonight. And that's Ms. Hartup.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Well, I'm Wendy Hartup, the chair, and I just wanted to let you all know we have had some really great events in this past year, lots of really good reviews of some exciting projects going on throughout the city. I think this is a 650 percent increase in us being able to say how exciting and pretty our community is going to get to be soon. And we had our Roots Day event back in October, very successful event. Our next one is October 15th in the Smith Farm Development. So we're excited to see what kind of trees that they're going to get to have that should be a little bit different because they don't have as many overhead lines, so we'll be able to do some canopy trees this time. So we'll be able to have a little bit more diversity than past years. And then, other than just some of our reviews, we had our awards back in June and had a really excellent speaker talking about the importance of trees in our communities and how that helps you to have a nice sense of community. So that's my main report. Thank you.
A great year. Any questions, Ms. Hartup?
No questions.
Well, certainly, Councilmember Adams.
Yes. Thank you so much again for what everybody does with your organization and with the city and the citizens. But could we get an email of, let's say, the past 10 years of where the Community Appearance Day, the annual event, the big event, has been held?
Oh, absolutely.
Okay.
Where all the Roots Day events have been?
Yes, yes.
Sure.
Thank you so much.
Absolutely.
I appreciate that because I tell them I feel like I've been kind of short or slighted. I think I don't remember the last one, and that's bad. I maybe, I know I'm getting old, but I don't remember the last one, not since I've been on council anyway.
Right.
There may have been one.
Yeah.
But I'd just like to see, just to see how we're looking, that it's getting around.
Oh, yeah. Absolutely. I think the biggest challenge has been trying to find big segments where we could actually get all these 400 volunteers because, you know, we're getting to where it's, we've done so many, over 7,500 trees, that, you know, we're going to start having just little tiny pockets we're going to be able to do soon enough. That's actually a good thing.
That's a good thing.
So we'll have to come up with a new event.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you.
Councilmember Burke?
Yes, Mayor, members of the council, it gives me a pleasure to say thank you to the chairman for the presentation, and since that's one of the committees that come before the mayor pro tem to make a recommendation, I would like to say to all of you how much we, as a council, appreciate what you do, you volunteer, you give your time. And the city is a very lovely place, and I think the trees make it look nice, and the efforts that you put into this is greatly appreciated.
Thank you, ma'am. We enjoy it.
Thank you very much.
Anything else?
Good, thank you. Tonight's agenda of the city council was comprised of the following items: we have four rezoning petitions and one area plan update. All of these items are listed for public hearings, and when the public hearing is called, persons in the council chamber will be given an opportunity to speak. If there is opposition to the zoning petitions, the proponents and the opponents will each be given 15 minutes for presentation and three minutes for rebuttal. If no one wishes to speak, I'll close the public hearing, and the city council will consider the item. We're televising this meeting live tonight on TV 13, and it will be replayed tomorrow at 9:00 a.m. and again Wednesday at 9:00 p.m. Of course, copies of our agenda, as well as videos of our meetings, are always available to the public at our website, www.cityofws.org, and just click on the "Watch Meetings Online" option. Councilmembers, before we go to the regular agenda, without objection, Councilmember Montgomery has placed an item at your place there. It's actually from the city attorney. Councilmember Montgomery has asked the consent of the council to add an item to the agenda tonight. My understanding, I'll let him speak to it, but my understanding is he does not wish the council to take action on tonight, but simply to enter into the record. Is there objection to, is there any objection to adding this to the agenda?
No.
No.
All right, seeing none, we'll add that to the agenda. Councilmember Montgomery, we'll talk about that at the end of the regular agenda. Thank you very much. May we have item number one?
Item one: Public hearing on zoning petition of Professional Drywall LLC from LIS to Property located on the northwest side of Motor Road between US 52 and Patterson Avenue, located in the northeast ward, recommended by planning board.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this? Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Councilmember, the, Councilmember Burke, this is your ward. Do you want the planning director to give a brief presentation?
Just briefly, please.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and good evening, councilmembers. You see the map here showing the property in yellow, just on the north side of Motor Road, west of Patterson Street. The, you see, it is constrained basically by US 52 and floodplain on either side of it. It has a limited amount of frontage on Motor Road itself. This is the aerial photo that shows the pretty developed area around it. And then this is the fairly narrow area of frontage that it has on Motor Road, just enough for the driveway to go into the property. You see, it has a building on it. And this is what you see in the foreground, that building and all those cars there is actually the adjacent property. It's not the property on this site that's looking toward US 52 on Motor Road. These are transmission lines across Motor Road, and this is Motor Road looking toward Patterson Avenue. The area plan shows it for industrial development, and this was actually rezoned in 2007 from HB to LIS to allow two uses, pretty heavy uses, building contractor-heavy and dirt storage. That use closed, and the new owner requests the HBL to allow more flexibility in the uses. And so there are a number of uses in the HB that are not included in their special-use request. You can see those listed there. And as I said, the site is pretty heavily constrained on both sides with floodplain or highway and as well as the overhead transmission line. This is, this is adjacent to other HB uses right around it, and it has a 5,000-square-foot existing building on it, and the request will allow the utilization of a developed property that has several site constraints. This went on June 9th to the planning board for public hearing. There was no opposition, appeared, or spoke, and the planning board recommended approval.
Any questions, Mr. Norby? Thank you, Mr. Norby. Councilmember Burke, if you're prepared for a motion?
Thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I have not heard any opposition, and so before I make my motion, I'm going to make a comment. I would hope that the area would continue to be structured and organized. We had nothing mainly years ago but trees, and now we have quite a few buildings out there, and I encourage anyone who's coming out to make it neat for the appearance. With that being said, Mr. Mayor, members of the council, I move for, one, adoption of the statement of consistency as set forth on page 21 of the agenda book, and, two, approval of W.3298.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed note? That is unanimous. Thank you. Item number two.
Item two: Public hearing on site plan amendment of South Park Shopping Center LLC. Property located on the east side of Peters Creek Parkway, south of South Park Boulevard, located in the south ward, recommended by planning board.
Again, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this item? I know the petitioner's here for any questions. Seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Councilmember McIntosh, do you want a brief presentation?
No.
Molly.
Uh, Molly, excuse me.
I'd like, well, he might.
I'll give it to you. Do you want one as well? Councilmember Light, would you like a brief presentation?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. You see the property here in yellow, right in front of the main building of the South Park Shopping Center. It's actually in the parking lot, fronting right on Peters Creek Parkway. Aerial photo shows the developed, pretty intensely-developed nature of the area around it. The South suburban area plan from 2011 shows this is all commercial. This is certainly in keeping with that. There, here's some ground shots. This is the frontage on Peters Creek Parkway, and the site to be developed is basically in this area, so it's going to involve the placement of more trees along there in front of the new restaurant. The restaurant will be placed in that parking lot. There will still be enough parking spaces for both the shopping center as well as the new restaurant. Another shot of part of the parking lot where it's going to be. This is the site plan. Hopefully, you can make out the outline of the restaurant there in the middle, and it has parking going around it with, you see the landscaping in the frontage, Peters Creek Parkway, and also along in the parking lot at different intervals. This is certainly consistent with the infill recommendations of both Legacy 2030 and the area plan. It'll result in a new building and installation of landscaping within an area that's currently asphalt paving, and there's no rezoning required, and the parking requirements of both the shopping center and the restaurant are still met. On June 9th, the planning board heard this, and there was no opposition. The planning board recommended approval.
Any questions, Mr. Norby? Councilmember McIntosh?
I was just curious about the payment in lieu of installing sidewalks. Notice that to the backside of this, you have connectivity with the neighborhoods behind this via sidewalks. Is that the reason why we're not requiring?
Yeah, well, the payment in lieu will give some flexibility as to the placement of sidewalks and coordinate it with other city efforts to install sidewalks in the area.
And since we don't, we're not placing a high value on having sidewalks along Peters Creek?
Well, particularly if there's a ditch section there.
Right.
It makes it more difficult to do that.
Right, so that can, that can be used better elsewhere. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Now, Councilmember Light, now for a motion, if she's ready.
Thank you. I, just a comment that I have, the only comments I have heard have been positive. Everybody is excited about the new restaurants that I've heard from. So I move for adoption of the statement of consistency as set forth on page 43 of the agenda book and approval of W.3300.
Second.
Motion second. Any discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed note? That is unanimous. Thank you. Item number three.
Item three: Public hearing on final development plan of brand properties for mixed-use project. Two-phase zoning district property located on the southeast corner of Peters Creek Parkway and West First Street, located in the northwest ward, recommended by the planning board.
If it's okay with the councilmembers, I was going to ask Mr. Norby to kind of lead us off on this. This is a two-part approval process here, and it's fairly complex, so without objection, I'm going to ask Mr. Norby to kind of tee us up. Mr. McIntosh?
Sure.
Yeah, Mr. Norby?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You see on the map there, the portion of this larger PBS-owned area that was zoned in 2007, the portion that's coming through for the final development plan, you see that in yellow just beyond the ballpark itself. Aerial photo shows pretty much the same thing, pretty, pretty urban area around there, and this is the South Central Area Plan showing an area surrounding mixed-use development, the West End neighborhood, downtown area, West Salem, you know, in the middle of a lot of things. Here's some ground shots, as you are very well familiar. This is looking south from First Street into the ballpark. This is looking east from Peters Creek Parkway, across that parking lot you just saw in the picture. This is looking east from Peters Creek Parkway and First Street toward downtown. This is looking north on Green Street toward First Street, and you see the parking lot for the ballpark there. And then this is looking south toward First Street and the Link Apartments, which have recently been constructed from Fayette Street. This is the original rezoning from 2007 that most of you are very familiar with, so it involved almost 26 acres of property that was zoned to PBS Two-Phase. And this was the original concept plan. It wasn't a, wasn't a developer plan or a site plan that was attached to the rezoning, but it was an illustration showing sort of the vision of the area that was submitted with the original rezoning. Again, we're talking actually 28.3 acres that was rezoned in 2007. The ballpark was certainly the first, first element of that development that was approved and developed. The Link Apartments followed in 2012 with its approval. And in 2007, when the rezoning was approved, there was a condition that called for a quote-unquote "master plan" to be approved before additional development. Now, "master plan" is not defined anywhere in the UDO. I think it was an ad hoc condition at the time of the rezoning, so it has no legal standing in the UDO, and all future phases beyond the one you have tonight are still subject to final development plan approval from the city council. This is the master plan that was actually, a version before this was submitted to the planning board for review, and after seeing staff comments and planning board comments, they made a few changes to that, and so that, this is the revision that they submitted after the planning board review. And you can see kind of the layout of that with the, starting with the ballpark, the, the development that occurs just beyond the outfield fence in different directions, the Link Apartments, and then going across First Street. You see some additional development that's going to occur there, and my next slide will kind of break that down. It includes the developer proposed in this final development plan, which is hotel apartments and parking deck. It also includes beyond, on the other side of First Street and in other portions of the area, grocery store, retail buildings, additional apartments, an office building, another parking deck, surface parking, and parkland, all on other portions of the site. There was a condition in 2007 that called for the developer to dedicate a replacement amount of acreage, which was .59 acres, along Green Street to replace the park that was in the Watkins Street area that was lost with the, with the, with the ballpark development. And so this is proposed along the Green Street alignment, extending also west into the ballpark entrance, and then across First Street. And this was reviewed as the condition called for by the Recreation and Parks Director and found suitable for, from his perspective. Connections are also shown from that to the multi-use path that would parallel Business 40. And Brookstown Avenue between Broad and Second Street is shown in there. The developer would propose closing it, but also recognized and stated on there that this is, this is subject to being studied and approved by the city council before anything like that could happen. The master plan, again, has no legal standing. It only projects what the developer's current thinking is about how, how development may happen in the area. So again, that's, that's the master plan. Now, moving to the final development plan for what is actually formally on your agenda tonight, is the, you see three or four major components. In the light tan is apartments that are proposed there, basically along the left field and centerfield fence, and then extending inward toward the property. You see a parking deck, that's that kind of, it's not colored in at all, it's white-colored in the middle, it's a rectangle area. And then the light blue is a proposed hotel, and then over in the left, upper-left corner is a, some commercial development. So all of that would be served by that parking deck that is accessed both from Peters Creek Parkway and from First Street. And as you can see, it's just beyond the edge of the concourse around the ballpark. These are elevations that they submitted, so starting in the upper-left, the upper-left is looking at the hotel from First Street. The one in the upper-right is if you were kind of above the left field area and you were looking towards centerfield, that's what you would see in terms of the apartments there. The lower-left is if you were in sort of right field, centerfield, looking toward the left field area where the apartments are. And then the, the lower-right would be looking along the Green Street alignment, so in place of that surface parking lot, you would see the apartments there. And over in the upper-right, upper-right of that picture would be the hotel rising above that. The hotel would be, is proposed at 133 rooms, six stories. Retail on this final development plan would be 9,000 square feet. However, their more recently submitted master plan shows it being reduced to 3,000 square feet, so it could be as low as that, but, or as high as 9,000. Multi-family residential would consist of 313 units and between four and five stories, depending on where you are in the development. The parking deck would have 669 spaces and six stories, although the master plan revision shows 609 spaces, so it could be anywhere between the 609 and the 669. If it is 609, the second parking deck that they'll be building beyond right field would have a higher number of parking spaces for a grand total of 1,000. And the, the plan shows an internal courtyard and open space and recreation areas for the apartments, and the vehicular access would be from Peters Creek Parkway and First Street. The developer had to submit a revision or an update to the parking study that was required in 2007, and also a revised traffic impact statement. And both of those were reviewed by the Winston-Salem Department of Transportation and Assistant City Manager Greg Turner. And Connie James is here in case there are any questions on that. But some highlights of that is the on-street parking, or onsite parking for Phase One. That's the development I just went over in the final development plan. In the new deck, well exceeds the parking requirement for Phase One. The parking requirement for the ballpark, which is just over 1,000 spaces, is still exceeded by the combination of spaces in different parking lots that are controlled by the developer, the Center City West Deck spaces, which was part of the original parking arrangement, and on-street parking within one-half mile of the ballpark. The traffic impact study was updated with the development information from both Phase One and Two, and it shows daily trip generation at a little over 10,000 trips per day, and if you don't count pass-by traffic, 8,500 trips per day. And it was agreed to that, that what they're proposing there can be absorbed by the transportation system with the improvements that are being done. The final development plan will help implement the original 2007 vision of the ballpark development as a compact urban mixed-use development, keeping in mind you're going to have additional final development plans that are going to be coming for other phases. It's consistent with the purpose statement and the district requirements of the PB District. It's consistent with the, with the area plan and Legacy 2030, and it will result in a more vibrant urban mix of land uses around the ballpark. This went on June 9th to the City-County Planning Board for public hearing. There was no opposition that was voiced at the, at the hearing. The planning board discussed both the proposed master plan and the final development plan, and the planning board voted to recommend approval of the master plan, although that vote was not unanimous, it was near unanimous, but, and then they unanimously recommended approval of the final development plan with the condition for dedication of .59 acres of contiguous parkland, which they are showing on the master plan. And as you all consider it, your first action would be needed on the master plan for tonight. I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Any questions, Mr. Norby? And Councilmember Light?
Show me the parkland, please.
If you'll, hopefully you can make out, it's, it's kind of a, it's a linear yellow area that if it extends out from the wall of centerfield, that's sort of at the entrance of the ballpark, and extends out toward Broad Street, then it turns left and goes along the alignment of Green Street. It fans out a little bit there at First Street, and then goes across First Street to that little area you see in yellow that's next to a, a future retail building. So that equals .59 acres there. The developer sees that as, as, A, a linear park and a more urban park with sort of a combination of landscaping and hardscape, and as the developer gets up and explains it, I believe he'll, he'll explain to you that they see that as a, as a good public gathering spot as, as there's lots of people that are going to be coming to the ballpark for events and things like that, and that that would be a good way to organize how pedestrian traffic is coming toward the ballpark.
How wide is that strip?
I'm just going to guesstimate that it's, it's probably at least 60 feet. Maybe, maybe as they, as the developer gets up, he can explain how, how wide it is.
60 feet deep?
Wide, and I, it's probably more than that. I just, I'm just going kind of on eyeballing it right now. And in those areas where it fans out, it would be obviously a lot larger.
Okay. And now would you tell me also about the plans for closing Brookstown? Is that part of what we're voting on tonight?
This master plan shows Brookstown as open between Broad Street and Second Street. The developer is still saying they'd like to propose for it to be closed, but they are acknowledging that that is subject to study as to whether that makes sense traffic-wise, and it's always subject to the city council voting to close it. So that's, that's only what they would desire to do, but on this master plan, they have left it open.
Okay. Because certainly that's an important historic route from the shallow ford of the Yakin River to Salem. So I think the historic, people will be very much opposed. So, thank you.
Thank you. Questions, Mr. Norby?
Yes. Mr. Norby, the orange along the bottom of the master plan, is that intended to represent pedestrian facility?
Yes, that would be pedestrian connection down the Green Street alignment to the Green Street pedestrian bridge over Business 40.
So that presumably would be part of the proposed multi-use path?
Yeah, and then the multi-use path is, is parallel to Business 40, so that's also intersecting it perpendicular to it.
Is the MUP shown on, on that graphic?
Yes, with that orange line there would be along the alignment of the multi-use path.
I just wanted to confirm that I understood that correctly. Thank you.
All right, the questions?
Yeah, question. So I know you've, you've said it a couple times, but I want to make sure, because this is an important point. The, the real estate north of West First Street, the master plan, not that we're voting on tonight, that is a, that's a proposal that will come before us to be reviewed when there's an actual plan by a developer to build something there.
Yes, that, it's, there is nothing that locks in development happening exactly like that, and anything that's proposed there is still going to be subject to a full final development plan review by the staff, the planning board, and city council.
The concerns that I've gotten from people in the community is that they felt like there's an awful lot of surface parking there. I just want to assure them that we are not stamping today that that can be developed as shown, that has to come back before us, has to go through the whole planning process again.
And that was one of the staff's comments to the developer as well.
Right, great. Thank you.
Great. Great, thank you, Mr. Norby. Councilman Taylor?
Thank you, just a quick question, Mr. Norby. Right beside the parking, you've mentioned the multi-use path, there's a yellow line extending off of that multi-use path, I'm not quite sure what that is, could you explain that, please?
That yellow line just signifies that it is, it is following the alignment of the Green, the Green Street pedestrian bridge that will actually be rebuilt with the Business 40 reconstruction. So, it just, it's just showing that you will have a line of pedestrian traffic from the West Salem neighborhood across there, and then through this linear park that is being proposed all the way up past First Street.
Thank you. Councilman Lyatt, have another question?
Yes, explain to me the traffic study, it said, you said something about not counting pass-by traffic, I'm not sure I get that.
I'm going to have to get Connie James up here.
Okay, Connie.
Ms. James?
Hi, it's Connie James, City DOT. The, a site will generate a certain amount of traffic, but from that, it will pull traffic that's already in the area. So, if I'm already driving down First Street, and I want to stop in the retail or visit the hotel for any reason, I would be one of those trips that was just passing by anyway and decided to stop. So, there was about, I think, 1,500 trips that was pass-by traffic that was reduced the total number of traffic. So, the 8,500 are new trips to the area.
New trips to the, the, this new development?
That's right.
So, it's not counting at all, say, like, the ordinary trips down First and Second Street and whatever?
That's correct. So, of that, the, the 10,000 number is the total number of trips that includes the new plus some of the existing trips that are already going down the street. And then the 8,500 would be the total new trips that are being brought into the area. Thank you.
Councilman Clark?
Yeah.
Paul, part, or important part of this is the realignment and the work we're going to do on Peters Creek Parkway. And it's my understanding we're going to do that work first before we start on redoing Business 40. Can you tell me, to the best of your knowledge, what is the current thinking on when that is going to start and when it's going to finish as far as the Peters Creek work?
I'm going to turn that over to Connie as well.
And that might be an unfair question, but it's an important question.
Okay, so, the, before Business 40 can be closed for that construction, the interchange has to be reconstructed to be able to handle detour traffic. And so, that will be the first phase of Business 40. The, the petitioner is also proposing to make certain improvements to First Street for two-way traffic, and that will be another element that must be done before Business 40 is closed.
Okay, but when do you anticipate them starting on the Peters Creek Parkway work? And when do you anticipate them finishing?
Okay, so the...
They being the state of North Carolina?
Yes, the, the state will let the project actually, this month, at the end of the month, the, the contract will be awarded. The plans will be very well along the way, and so the groundbreaking is in October. And so, the, late this year, the actual construction work will begin in that area and in other parts of the city for off, other off-site improvements that have to be completed. And it'll probably take about anywhere from 12 to 18 months to, for that work to happen.
Thank you. Great. Thank you, Ms. James. All right, so, this is a public hearing, have a couple of folks who have signed up to be heard. First, Dan Fitzpatrick. If you'd state your name or address for the record, please, Mr. Fitzpatrick.
Actually, I'm going to use that.
Okay.
Before we can switch it, so I can point?
Yeah, she's going to switch.
Dan Fitzpatrick with Brand Properties, 3328 Peachtree Road, Atlanta, Georgia. Want to thank you for the opportunity to present tonight, and I especially want to thank the staff who have worked very hard on this project. They've been tremendously helpful, and I think very excited about the project as we are. Many of the questions that you've already asked covered what I was going to speak on, so I'll be very brief. But we're extremely excited about what we think can be an exceptional mixed-use opportunity. The master plan that we have before you, we think really works to tie this neighborhood together and to create a walkable, bikeable environment that'll bring the adjoining neighborhoods into the, the ballpark development. The few items that I wanted to point out in particular that somewhat have already been covered is the linear park that was referenced. This area in yellow is actually larger than the .59 acres that are required by our conditions. As we have worked with parks and recreation, I think this has really become an exciting element to the park. This is, we, we've talked about landscape features and seating areas and places of presence, so that you can say, "Meet me at," and it really creates a place of being around the ballpark. Also, when we met with the Winston-Salem operations staff for the DASH, they were very excited about the opportunities on game day in this area, possibilities like bringing in food trucks into this court, into this, this linear park, and really creating a outdoor environment for people to have a sense of being in place. The other question that was already brought up was this connection to the multi-use trail. It's very important to us to have these points of connection. We want to have wide sidewalks, we want to have a walkable environment, we want to be able to connect across I-40 Business to the adjoining neighborhoods, so that everybody can enjoy the amenities of the, of the park and the entire development. Architecturally, the renderings that you saw earlier are designed to work with the ballpark architecture, so it creates a total environment, it doesn't look like a mishmash. It is designed to be one large development that all works together. Our goal, there was a question about timing on the I-40. Our goal for development would be to open our development to coincide with the completion of the interchange work there at I-40 and Peters Creek. With all that diverting traffic, that's a great opportunity for us, but we also want to be out of the way when the traffic comes up, so that we're not creating any other bottlenecks. And then the closing of Brookstown, as we said, that's part of a future master plan. The master plan is really a vision of what this could be. Each component has to come back for individual approval. As I said in planning, planning board, we believe that success breeds success. So, as our first component, which we're approving tonight, which is just this area, is successful, we hope that this area can be even more successful and even more than what we see here. But at this point, this is a vision of where we're going directionally. The project itself was really started by the city in 2007, with the investment in the ballpark and the vision for what this area could be. It's already come a great, great way from what it was before the ballpark started, and this is the point where we're ready to take the next step and bring in the next phase of development. It's a large development by Brand in the city of Winston-Salem, and hope it shows our commitment to the city.
Question, I've seen numbers, and would you be in a position to say roughly the private investment anticipated in this particular phase?
Private investment exclusive of the parking deck would be in excess of $60 million.
$60 million. So, if you take that, 60, plus, I think it's 26 million for the apartments across the street that have already been built, and we're getting up 90-plus million dollars as a result of the ballpark and the investment that the city council approved several years ago. Other questions, or Mr. Fitzpatrick?
For a comment versus a question, but I want to say thank you. There was definitely some criticism earlier on about the, the parkland being cut up in really small spaces, and I was happy that you guys were responsive to that and came back and showed something that actually seems like it's a net positive versus just a, something that was fulfilling the letter of, of the agreement. So, I want to say, say thank you on that. And also that there are other opportunities in the area for parkland. We just dedicated a park over on Second Street, so there's, there's parkland there that will service the residents of this. And then when the, when Business 40 gets done, there'll be some other opportunities of land around the area that could potentially be parkland as well. So, I, I think in the long run, we're going to end up with a good amount of parkland right around there. Thank you for working with us on that.
Councilman McGovern, have a question?
Yes, I do. I know in your, the comments and talking about the plan itself, a couple of things that, that jumped out at me in terms of just the importance of, of having connections, you know, the importance of, of being able to integrate the park, the space that's there, being able to have the connections to pedestrians, and then speaking of a place of, of being a place that everyone can come and enjoy. And looking at the master plan itself, one thing I was wanting to hear and that I did not hear, that I believe should be a part of the conversation when you're talking about the master plan and fully what would be done in this process, is something that I commented on early on in this project when we were looking at the, the development itself, and hadn't heard a comment yet in reference to workforce and affordable housing within the development and the plan, which I think that, thinking in this level, I know we're looking at land use and how it can continue to develop out, but I think that has to be a part of the conversation. I hadn't heard that mentioned at all, I heard a lot of other pieces, but I hadn't heard that. And so, to me, I wondered if that's even still part of the consideration and conversation, as that was something that was suggested would be a part of the thought moving forward with the development.
It is, and that is actually addressed in the documents of the agreement to support the parking deck. So, part of that is our commitment to affordable housing in the next phase of multifamily development. So, that, that's documented in those, in those agreements.
I, I know it's in there, but I just hadn't heard it discussed specifically when it comes to the, the larger master plan. For me, when we're talking about something, if it's a part of it, and when we're talking about planning, I want to hear that that's a part of the thinking when you're doing it. Because not an afterthought, but as a part of the planning process, it, it should be a consideration.
Absolutely.
All right, one last.
Yeah, Councilman... Sorry. The, at one point during the conversation, I remember that there was talk about who was going to maintain this interior park, and it's my understanding that you, as a developer, will be maintaining that, not the city of Winston-Salem, is that correct?
I think that'll be a joint effort. I mean, clearly, it's important to us to be able to get in there and maintain that. The DASH currently does a lot of the maintenance in this area because the game-day traffic generates a lot of the things that need to be addressed. So, joint effort there, and then we're, we'll work with the city Parks and Recreation Department to make sure that everything is covered, nothing slips through the cracks.
Thank you. All right. Thank you, Dan. Councilman Burke?
I always look at when developers come into a city and they, we take a chance on you, and you take a chance on us. And when I thought back about how that area looked, what it could have been for quite some times, but we, on this council, were brave enough to say that DASH will be. And then to have, when I look at the apartments over there, and then the vision you have, it will help out with the city to not only make the appearance, but it will also motivate, I think, when people come to visit, that they would like to maybe stay in the city. So, I want to tell you how much I appreciate your efforts, and you, we're going to make money. We will make money. Thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Dan. All right, George Bryan?
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. George Bryan at 1326 Glade Street, 27101. The newspaper wasn't as precise as I would have liked it to be today, because it wasn't unanimous in terms of the master plan, and I think Paul Norby did a good job of explaining that. And I come to talk tonight as a neighbor that lives in the West End, serves on the West End Board, and also as the, as part of the Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance. First of all, I and everyone I talk to really like this project, that's why I'm signed up as a proponent to it. It's a wonderful development, and in terms of planning for Winston-Salem, we're talking about high-density infill, which is exactly what we need with existing utilities and everything like that, with mixed retail. So, I mean, this is just perfectly exciting, what a great place to put this. Secondly, you, as city council, representing us taxpayers, have given a tremendous amount to this area, which is why it is so valuable. And this investment should leave you with very high expectations for how this development occurs, and with no apologies. So, a couple of ideas and issues that have to do with what is being presented. First of all, the master plan just falls short, uninspired. Surface parking lots are not places I want to walk by, it isn't telling me what the potential is for the future, and I realize a master plan is going to have to change, and, and what we're looking at here probably is, is, is going to look at what opportunities arise. So, we, we know there will be some flexibility, but let's have a master plan that really is something that you all can say, "Well, why didn't you do this?" I mean, you're not going to say to the, to the developers down the road, "Why didn't you put another surface parking lot in there?" You want to know what's going to be in there, you want to know if, if there's going to be different types of housing, you want to know how it's going to transition to other neighborhoods. So, if, if the surface lots are going to be built at this stage, I would really encourage the council to encourage those trees to be parked, to be part of those parking lots. I don't believe that that's required by code in, in what we have, unless there is development on that same place. So, get the trees in there while we have it as a temporary piece. I like the fact that the buildings have been moved up close to the street, because this should be a true urban neighborhood. Think about the proposed building and its orientation to the ball field. When you guys invested in that ball field and you looked at those conceptual pictures, and you looked at sitting in the stands and looking at the, the, the cityscape, I haven't seen an elevation of this yet, so I don't know whether you're going to see that cityscape once this is built or not. But I think you, as the city council, and us taxpayers, at least have a right to know that. Now, you can still make a decision, it's more important to have the vertical height than it is the, the skyline, but let us, let's be sure we know that walking into this, because there are many ways to, to do the buildings. Don't give away Brookstown. It is historic. Don't give it away, even if it ends up not being a car thoroughfare. It is still important enough and part of our history enough that it could be made into an excellent park or greenway or something like that. And, and, and I, I think this is an important thing to keep in mind right now, rather than it just sort of happening down the way. The parking is already projected in West End, and from the West Side of Neighborhood Alliance, we're also hearing that that's impending on West Salem currently. I, I tell you, there's, there's enough money in this and enough planning in this that the, the parking can be in this area rather than having to spread into those two neighborhoods, and I think you can, you can make that happen. Let's, let's also realize that we need transitional buildings as this neighborhood comes into the historical part of the, the area around there, and as it comes into Brook Street. So, I, I think this could be part of the master plan, we could see what would that potentially look like. Now, it may not end up being exactly like that, but at least the thinking would go in there. I think you've got a wonderful designer that could do that kind of work, I, I think you've got the right people there, it's just we have to have those expectations along the way. What we need is, if we're going to have this wonderful dense development, is we need to ensure that there are places to walk, that there's some canopy in the midst of there, that if people want to have dogs in their apartment, they have a place to take them down and walk them along the way. And if we can ever figure out a way to entice families to come downtown, which we haven't done yet, let's at least think that, okay, maybe this space could be good for a play area for families. The, Winston-Salem Neighborhood Alliance is very careful about the park, and, and we're not sure about this linear park at all, because frankly, it's an entrance to the ballpark, and that's what it is. If another group wants to have a, an event there, think about it, if a group wants to have an event there, and it's the same night as a ballpark, are we going to go with the ballpark, are we going to go with the other group that wants to have an event in a linear park? It truly is an entrance to the ballpark. We've heard the discussion, I encourage you, get it in writing who's going to take care of it, if every time that linear parks, if there's a ballgame, that linear park's going to be used by the ballpark folks. Get it in writing, I think Mr. McIntosh is exactly right, let's think through that before it gets down and gets done. So, in conclusion, don't accept the master plan as it is, let's, let's encourage them to go back to our planning department, come up with a good idea on what that looks like. You're going to have these elements come back, but if you don't have anything to measure these elements against, then you don't really have the master plan in the first place. Go ahead, approve that development that's been presented here tonight, great, we're on the right track, and, and let's make this a world-class part of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, George. Is there anyone else who would like to be heard during this public hearing? All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed and recognize Councilman McIntosh.
Because the, the motion speaks directly to what Mr. Bryan was just talking about, I would like to just, the first part of this calls for approval of the master plan. would like to just, the first part of this calls for approval of the master plan. Now, from a timing standpoint, I think it's important that we move forward on this, but I do also want to get a commitment in front of the developer and make a condition that we do continue to have an active discussion about what this second phase, 2B, I think is what it is, is going to look like, and that, so that we're not surprised when you guys come back and say, okay, here's what we're getting ready to ask for a building permit on. So I don't know how to do that.
He needs to come up to the microphone and agree to that. Mr. Fitzpatrick.
We would absolutely commit to working with the city on all the future phases.
Okay. And being actively engaged as we move forward, not just, like I say, when you, when there's a deal gets struck, you guys come back and say, okay, here's our deal, we want approval. We'd like to be involved in that process going forward. Like, so you-
Absolutely.
-you'll commit to that.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. With that in mind, I move for approval of the master plan subject to the final development plan for subsequent phases being submitted to the city council for approval and the same being approved by city council.
Motion second. Discussion. Councilmember Light and Councilmember Montgomery.
I agree with Mr. Bryan that this is not adequate for a blueprint for the future. First of all, the threat to Brookstown would make me vote against this master plan, and certainly the park, parkland is inadequate. I agree that it will just simply be a part of the ballpark. It won't be an amenity to the people who live in the apartments, walk their dogs, whatever. I'm not going to be able to support the master plan.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Is there not a narrative that goes along with the images that's developed with the master plan, or is it just the diagram with the specifics there? Is that the only thing that's associated with it?
Yes, the overall site plan that you see that's labeled "master plan," that is the only document.
I think it would have been helpful and could have touched on some of the questions and concerns and even some of mine to have had an additional narrative that was associated with the master plan, that could have written out some of the questions and comments associated with that and not just the image that was there, because I think that could have actually codified some of the questions that were there, even though we know it's a plan and it's, as you stated earlier, it's not a legally binding document, but what we know consistently is that when things come to us, we reference every plan that this council has approved. And along those lines, I think that that also, again, illustrates intentionality, meaning what is our process, what is our thought process as we're actually planning, what's on our minds? And so I think that that's something that's lacking within the plan itself, is not to have it accompanied with something like that. To me, makes it not fully sufficient.
Councilwoman Clark.
First off, we need to approve by previous requirements. We have to approve the master plan before we can approve the site plan. I'm not particularly concerned about the master plan because I can guarantee you 100% that what gets built will not be what's on that master plan. It's non-binding, it's the best guess. Right now, it could be five, 10, 15 years before that gets built. We're sitting here in 2016, which is nine years after the ballpark was built, just for Phase 1. We will have a chance at the appropriate time to comment, and that could be quite a while. I don't know. Once these apartments get built and the retail, that may trigger some other things coming in, but I think I know development well enough. If somebody wants to build a bowling alley there, they'll take that into consideration. But this is their best guess at this moment in time. But I think the time to deal with the future phases is when the future phases come. So I don't have any trouble with the master plan because what I want to do is approve the other. And again, five, 10 years from now, whatever, three, four years, when the developer comes back and wants to talk, he's already said he's going to have to sit down with the planning people, with Mr. McIntosh, the council member for that ward, and work through what's there. So-
So the motion before us is to approve the master plan as a guide, basically, and then we'll come back. The next motion will be the specific actions on the ordinance. Councilmember Montgomery.
I did want to speak to Ms. Light's comments. The original site plan or master plan that came to us showed Brookstown closed, and from the comments that I got, I was not comfortable with saying that, even though we know this is just a paper plan, I was not comfortable with that showing on a piece of paper that we are approving tonight. So this shows that Brookstown is not closed. So we are approving a master plan that we know will change, but we also are not signaling that it's okay to close Brookstown just because it's on this page. So that was important to me. And also, the configuration of the buildings changed from what was shown to the planning board as well. Again, to just set out that we know it's not, it's in stone, but we don't want it to go forward looking like we know we don't want it to end up being.
Thank you. Councilmember Bessie had to-
Actually, I was just going to make the point that as far as I could tell, we were not approving anything that indicated closure of Brookstown. I mean, I don't even see it written on here as a possibility.
Councilmember Adams.
Thank you, Mayor. I think, again, to allay any fears or perception that we're voting on something that the neighborhood or the council member or the city council has not put some thought into, Councilmember Clark, the ballpark was done nine, 10 years ago. And every time any project comes to the city, so far as development is concerned, we go back through the process all over again. And I understand people wanting to, the council wanting to implant or input possible suggestions, but the one thing is clear, we've talked about this phase, this master plan, and what we're voting on tonight, probably, what, a year ago, two years? What, it's come to us, and now we're seeing it. Again, I just want to be heard that I support it. Again, as we move down that path to development and innovation, towards putting, again, together something of all of these projects with the bonds that we got going on here in the city, people, we're competing with other cities. So, and I'm not trying to stop the process, but you always got to keep in mind that we're competing with all these other cities right here in the state of North Carolina, Virginia, Georgia, and South Carolina. So I'll be supporting this, and again, as we move down the path of this journey, I was hoping that I will get to see this come to fruition, and I hope that we can say when we're moving, Mr. Bryan, the council member, Ms. Councilmember Light, the park, that the neighborhood and everybody can reach some sort of agreement. But you got to remember, we all got to figure out how we can make this win-win so that we can move on with the project.
Thank you. Councilmember Taylor.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, I just wanted to make my comments very briefly. First of all, to the developers, we appreciate you coming to our city and offering to create investment. That's something that's very important to us. I am concerned with the comments that Mr. Bryan said. I agree with them. I will have to support the master plan, but I do think we didn't get down into the weeds deep enough in order to make the changes that are necessary. I know this is a plan, but we always say, when there's a plan in place, as Councilmember Montgomery has been stating, we usually stick to that plan. So there's, I'm confident that based on Councilmember McIntosh's comments, that we can come back as a city, work and partner with developers to make sure that we're moving forward together on that master plan. I want to take a moment and just express some of the concerns that I've heard. The major concern is the area where the ballpark currently sits. There were people who lived in that community who no longer live in that community. However, the concern is that those same people, once the development is put together, won't be able to live in that community. And I don't want to use the G-word, gentrification, but there's concern that the people who live in this entire community, it's good to talk about West Salem, it's good to talk about those around Broad Street who live in this community. Sure is inviting to those neighbors, but just like downtown, the ballpark should be a development for everybody. It's everybody's living room, and I agree with Councilmember Montgomery that we do need to hear more about the conversation of affordable housing. We want people to be able to live in this community, and that's all that I'm hearing. When I'm looking on social media, I'm getting phone calls from the people I represent, "Mr. Taylor, how can we live in this community? We can't afford it. Are we creating a subset of a community that, you know, are we separating the communities?" And that's something that's very important to me. So to the developers, again, we don't want you to go anywhere. I'm happy to have you in this city as a native son, so be comfortable, please, but we want you to make sure we continue to hear more about affordable housing. People want to live by the ballpark who can't afford to live there, so let's continue those conversations. I will support the master plan reluctantly, but I just wanted to make sure we got those comments on the record. Thank you.
Councilmember Montgomery.
Yes, again, I just want to reiterate, and I think Councilmember Taylor agreed Paul Harlow with comments he mentioned, and when we think about the ballpark itself, it is built on top of a place in which individuals who lived there before could not live in any other housing that exists there today. And so I think we have to think about what was there before and think about where we move now. When I think about the intentionality in the planning and development, just, I would ask developers and others, and I'm sure you may have seen already, but go to BullStreetSC.com. It is the Spirit Communications Baseball Stadium Development in Columbia, South Carolina, and the associated plan and master plan that they developed with that is, it goes into much more of a detailed and thought process of how they are developing and creates an experience. It creates a place. It's about place-making and how that master plan comes together to help create place. And I think that's all that I think we hear, how are we making place for everyone? How are we creating place to make sure that it's an inclusive type of community? And I think it takes the intentional actions of those who are in the process to do it. It can't be, you know, second thoughts. It has to be a part of the initial process and initial planning pieces of that. And not saying that that's not, but just based upon what we have before us right now, all of those pieces don't seem to be a part of the thought process. And for me, I need it to be a part of the upfront thought process, and because of the lack of that, I won't be supporting the master plan as it exists today because I think it's missing some of the key pieces that I think are essential for the holistic approach to the community. Again, kudos to the development partners for coming together and bringing this, but there are pieces here that I think we have to stand firm on to make sure that we don't forget these pieces move forward.
Councilmember Bessie.
Yes, I made a mistake a moment ago when I said there was no reference to the possible closure. Flipping back and forth between the preliminary and the revised plans, there is actually a reference. Closure of Brookstown Road contingent upon study and final approval by the city. Now, clearly, that doesn't presume that we'll grant the approval, but I wonder if an amendment would be entertained to simply delete the reference to the possible closure. That doesn't, hip and thin for coming back and asking for it, but it does make it clear that there's no prejudgment that such would be favored.
I would ask the council member if he would-
Either way, we're going to study the closure, so I'm okay with that.
So the, as I understand it, then, as a friendly amendment to the motion, the reference in the master plan to the potential possible closure of Brookstown would be removed.
Just remove the language that says, "Closure of Brookstown Road contingent upon study and final approval of the city." So it's silent on that.
Okay. Everybody understand that?
Yeah.
I do.
Thank you. All right. We have before us a motion to approve the master plan as friendly amended. All in favor of that motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No?
No.
Hearing one no, I believe, that means the, Councilmember Light voting no. And now, Councilmember McIntosh, I guess, a motion on the ordinance amendments.
I move for, one, adoption of the statement of consistency as set forth on page 93 of the agenda book, and, two, approval of W. 2936, subject to the developer obtaining an encroachment agreement from the city of Winston-Salem for the portion of the development within the ballpark property owned by the city. PIN number 6825-941668.00.
Motion second. Discussion. Councilmember Bessie.
Just another point raised by Mr. Bryan, that there was inadequate discussion of the, of the vertical impact. I thought that was a good question, and so I looked, and on the site plan, it does specify either four or five stories, depending on what section you're talking about, and height of either approximately 46 feet or approximately 56 feet. So we do have data on that. I agree that is an important point, but it is actually on the site plan.
All right. All of folk, excuse me, Councilmember-
Yeah, I just want to, for point of order, back, that vote was not on the amendment, that was on full action.
That was on full.
That was on a note.
Okay. I thought you were going to vote no. So the vote was then six to two, with Councilmember Montgomery and Councilmember White voting negative. Thank you for clarifying that, Councilmember Montgomery. All right, we do have a motion now to approve the final, the development plan itself. All in favor of that motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? That is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember McIntosh. And Fitzpatrick, thank you for your continued investment in our community. Item number four.
Item four, public hearing on zoning petition of Armenia DeCastro from LB to GBL, property located on the north side of Clemensville Road, west of Ebert Road, located in the south ward, recommended by the planning board.
Thank you. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed rezoning petition? All right, seeing no one, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Councilmember Light, this is Giridha. Would you like to count, Mr. Norby to make the-
Yes, please.
Mayor, members of the council, looks like our computer has gone dead, so I'll just do it the manual way here. This is a .7 acre tract of land on Clemensville Road. West Clemensville Road, as you can see, the surrounding zoning is LB. Around it, they are asking for GBL, that's general business limited use. The area around there is a variety of different kinds of commercial development. Immediately to the east of there is a fairly new Family Dollar that just opened up. Across the street are several, are some auto-related businesses, a parts shop, a pawn shop, and I believe there was another, another similar use in that area there. The petitioner is asking for commercial zoning to be able to open up a auto repair business and related uses that are related to that. This went to the planning board. There was no opposition to it. The planning board considered the concerns about impact on the property immediately to the west that is owned, single-family residential, but the petitioner said they had reached out to that property owner and that they were supportive of it, and the rest of the properties are non-residential, so majority of the planning board felt that this could be, this could be supported since this is not all that different in nature than some of the other uses that are, that are in the immediate area there. So the planning board voted to recommend approval of this.
Any questions to Mr. Norby? All right, Councilmember Light.
Okay, thank you. In fact, I was the one who recommended that the DeCastros make this request, so I think it'll be a boon for the neighborhood, get your oil changed, and this, that, and the other. The one comment that it would increase traffic is, in fact, not the case, maybe 20 cars a day or something like that. So I move for adoption of the statement of consistency as sent forth on page 125 of the agenda book and deny, and approval of W. 3299.
Second. Motion second. Any discussion?
One, it's page 123. 123? I've got the wrong paper, so.
So page 123 is correct?
For approval.
For approval.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No? That is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Light. Item number five.
Item five, public hearing on resolution adopting the proposed Southwest Winston-Salem Area Plan Update, recommended by the Planning Board and Community Development Housing and General Government Committee.
Mr. Norby and Mr. Bennett are going to make this presentation, I believe.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Seems like everything's working.
This is, we got it back up again. The Southwest Winston-Salem Area Plan Update, and just to give you the context of it, this is a map of the county where you can see all of our different area plans. The brighter blue areas are area plans that have been updated since Legacy 2013 was adopted. The lighter blue areas are the ones we've been working on this year that have not yet been adopted. Of course, the one you see here with the Southwest Area Plan is up for your consideration tonight. We also have the Rural Hall Area Plan that is before the county commissioners right now. So, but that's part of the planning board's initiative to keep all of these area plans fairly fresh, and with each of them, we involve a lot of citizen and institutional and developer participation as well. So Kelly Bennett led this process, and he will give you a brief summary of the plan.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council.
Thank you, Paul. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of the council. Here we have the Southwest Winston-Salem Plan area. And this is an update after the plan was adopted in 2009. And the area is bounded by Peters Creek Parkway on the east, Salas Creek Parkway on the south and west, and Business 40 on the north. This is a look at the existing land use and the proposed land use. And these are the proposed land use changes. Most of the land use changes that you see here are adding areas where mixed use could be appropriate. And one of those areas is the West Salem Activity Center. This is just south of the ballpark. And what we're looking at here is the opportunity to continue the development pattern, the new development pattern that you're seeing, seeing near the ballpark with either mixed use or multifamily and commercial buildings added along Peters Creek Parkway. And this is a sketch plan of what that could look like. Another area for possible mixed use is the Throughway Activity Center. And mixed-use buildings could be added here using the topography, the hill along Stratford Road, to add parking decks and buildings along Stratford Road. Wake Forest Baptist Medical Center Activity Center. We worked with the community and the medical center to come up with a plan for this area. And you'll see this area here, the corner of Cloverdale and Miller. This is where the medical center plans to build their Cloverdale Outpatient Surgery Center. And the plan recommends to build the more intense uses and taller buildings along Cloverdale Avenue, and then build a parking deck into the slope on the back of the site. And there are no plans to demolish any of the houses on Queen Street, so that would protect the neighborhood from this type of development. One of the areas that gathered the most attention and citizen input is the, what's called the Goat Farm Property on the corner of Ebert Street and Salas Creek Parkway. And the recommendation for the plan, and this is the same as the 2009 plan, is for medium-density multifamily for this area. And in the Haynes Town area, the plan is recommending a mix of office and multifamily development, and that developers should assemble lots before seeking rezoning to transition to that type of development there. Transportation improvements. This area is pretty built out, but where transportation departments has several sidewalks that they're recommending, as well as a side path along Peters Creek Parkway. And as far as community facilities go, the Salem Creek Greenway Extension is planned, with design and construction scheduled to begin within the next five years. And then the Business 40 Side Path, which is planned with the Business 40 Improvement Project. And the plan process began in November 2015. We had four public meetings that ran monthly until February 2016. Had about 60, 70 people participate over that period of time. Unanimous approval and recommendation by the planning board, as well as Community Development, Housing, and General Government Committee. I'm happy to answer. Any questions?
Any questions? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the council chamber who wishes to be heard on this proposed plan update? Seeing none, I'll declare the public hearing closed. Councilmember Bessie, this is basically in your ward.
Basically, this is the extended Ardmore Neighborhood, the Haynes Town Neighborhood, both hospital complexes and Throughway, and, you know, a few other smaller commercial spots mixed in. There was very active participation from particularly the Ardmore Neighborhood in the plan update. A lot of details were discussed about different corners of the area. A couple of proposals were brought up that did not meet with resident approval and are not included in the recommended plan. On behalf of the area, I'll be happy to recommend approval.
Motion second. Any discussion? Not all in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That is unanimous. Thank you, Councilmember Bessie. We'll now go back to the extra item that we added to the agenda, which is the resolution in front of you rescinding city council support for the revenue bonds to finance the acquisition of the Roland Hills Apartments. And I'd recognize Councilmember Montgomery, if he'd like to speak to this at this point.
Yes, I'd ask staff to examine what it would take for council to rescind its support for the revenue bonds in which we endorsed a couple months ago in reference to the Roland Hills Apartments. I am sure that many of you all are aware and have seen some of the many issues that have been taking place there on the property. The reason in which this request was made to staff was because, looking at the dollar amount that was looking to be invested in the property, along with the additional needs beyond the minimum housing codes that exist in the property, the dollar amount that was going to be invested did not appear to be substantial enough to prevent us from being back in this place as a community here in the not-too-distant future. And I did ask staff to kind of take some looks at what it would take to get to that place. And I'm not sure if Mr. Brooks is prepared to comment at all on that. And if he is, I'd ask him to come. If he's not, that's okay.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the city council.
Good evening.
At the request of Councilmember Montgomery, staff took a very quick look at the scope of work that was proposed and just the entire situation involving the Roland Hills work. The scope of work and the cost that was submitted some time ago was approximately somewhere in the neighborhood of 15, 16, 17,000 a unit, which would bring the units into compliance with minimum housing code. However, as you all know, over the past several years, that is what has happened. The unit has constantly, the complex, rather, has constantly been inspected and brought into minimum housing code, and it continues to fall back into disrepair. So in answer to the question about what could be done to do something different, what staff talked about was a substantial rehabilitation of the project. If one were to look at keeping it there and making a difference in the structure itself, a much higher standard, substantial rehab would probably be what would be sufficient to do that. Didn't have time to do a thorough review, but we did look back over some past complexes. And the one that we used was the Old Gola on Old Greensboro Road. And looking at the hard, the hard cost, just the hard cost demolition and contingency on that project in 2011, that was $47,000 per unit. Of course, you had soft costs. The developer of Roland Hills adjusted their cost analysis over the weekend and indicated that they were moving the estimate substantially upwards and had now projected approximately $37,000 per unit for the work. We have not been able to confirm that, nor have we looked at the additional work that would be suggested between the old price of 15, 17, now to 37. So before giving you a definitive response, we would need time to do that. However, in looking at it, we do believe that in order to do a substantial rehab where there would be a significant difference in the physical building itself, it would be somewhere in the neighborhood of 45 to 50,000 dollars per unit in order to achieve that. And with further time, we can probably be a little bit more precise on that number.
Thank you, Mr. Brooks.
And with that, later this afternoon, after we've had a conversation with staff, I had additional conversation with one of the representative from the steel group who represents the ownership group who are, who have the Roland Hills property under contract. And they indicated to me that even above the adjusted numbers that they sent back to the city over the weekend, that they were going to take the remainder this week to go back with their construction teams and to reevaluate those numbers again, and then to submit back to city staff by next week, a revised scope of work and a revised number of investment. And with that, as I said to them, they were aware that this item was coming before council. And with that, I would ask that we remain, that we would ask that this item go back to the Finance Committee to look at the additional information in which the purchasers intend to send to the city. And understanding with that, that if in fact they do go to a higher dollar amount for their investment, that it would mean that we would have to increase what we did in terms of inducing the bond. So it would have to be another item that would come back to council at another time.
All right. So your motion then is to send this to the Finance Committee for its review, given the additional information from the developer and staff.
Second.
Second. Any discussion? Councilmember Taylor?
Yeah, I just want to say I definitely supported when I did it with the second. But I just want to take a moment and thank all those in the community who have taken the time to support the Roland Hills community. There have been plenty of people who've donated water, who've donated clothes, who've gone out and set up food and other resources. And it really speaks to how, as a community in the City of Winston-Salem, we come together and deal with our issues. So to everyone who's supported Roland Hills, thank you. We're doing what we can on our end, from the inspections all the way to the city council, to make sure that we're supporting those residents of Roland Hills. And something will be done. It has been done, it will continue to be done on their behalf.
Councilmember McIntosh?
One of the things I'd like to see from the developer is a pro forma of money in, money out. I want to see how he's going to make a profit in this because this has gotten a lot more expensive than he anticipated. So that information, I think, will be very helpful.
All right, very good. Councilman Clark?
Let's just comment as head of Finance Committee. It may be a while before we come back because, as Mr. McIntosh says, these folks have got to crunch a lot of numbers and this, that, and the other. But if we have somebody willing to put in, we're up to, started at 15, we're up to 37. I think we're starting to talk about real money, but we will certainly look at it carefully in finance. And it sounds like, I know the staff's been on top of it. We get updates very, very regularly from them. Thank you.
All right, very good. Okay, the motion then to send this back to Finance Committee. I'll throw you the motion. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That's unanimous. I'd recognize Councilmember Clark for a motion for closed session, or for Councilmember Bessie.
I'll yield Mr. Bessie's.
Very briefly, very briefly. I just realized, as soon as we concluded item five, I had neglected to thank staff, planning staff, for all the hard work they put into the Southwest Area Update. Mr. Bennett has already stepped out. And Mr. Norby, if you would, if you would let him and your other staff members know that I did remember and said, "Thank you for their work in preparing that update."
You can watch the video of it tomorrow morning at 9:00.
That's right.
Councilman Clark?
Okay, I would like to move that the city council go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318, .11A4, to discuss the location or expansion of an industry and/or business within the city.
Second. Motion second. I'll throw you the motion. Please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? No. That's unanimous. To go in closed session.